...First Street, Trinity County, Cornhill Road in Texas. Or can I be here as the chair?
Good Lord, we thank you for a new day. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. But we ask that you be with this county today and the decision makers as we go through and handle the county's business. We ask all this in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Said, please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Anybody like to speak in a public forum?
I would like to, just briefly. Previous county judge, uh, I guess I didn't, I was unaware, but I got appointed as the Trinity County Flood Plan Manager, whatever. And what that is, is FEMA, uh, lists my name and information everywhere. So people who are trying to get loans or fi- trying to find out if their properties in the flood plan district, uh, contact me. We did not, we do not have not participated in that program, but it's something I just want to bring to y'all's attention. People are not able to get home loan, V H, uh, V H A, V A loans, or any type of government loans because we do not have this program in Trinity County. I just want to bring it up to y'all's attention, so, because I was really unaware of it until maybe about the past six months where I'm starting getting calls from, I'm getting calls from lenders, uh, who know if these properties are living in the flood plan area or not, and, uh, people who are trying to apply for these loans. Uh, I didn't know that we, Trinity County was just not giving that, and break back to y'all's attention. So if that's something y'all want to look into in the future, so these people could get loans, or the lenders, or the insurance agency. I got a call this week from the insurance, uh, under, but I just want to bring it up to y'all's attention, that's what I'm bringing up.
Am I going to be allowed to talk on eleven, or do I need to talk now?
Wouldn't.
I said, do I need to talk now in the open forum, or do I need to wait until eleven to speak?
You can go ahead and ask.
Go ahead now. Uh, real quick, I know this jail issue is a lot out of them, but there's some things that I want to say real quick before we start voting on how this is gonna happen. I've not been consulted with very much on this whole jail operation and, and what I need, and I'm gonna be the one operating this jail. I see that we've got two things y'all are gonna, uh, discuss today, and that is, one, to build it with an office or without an office. If we build the jail two miles away, it needs to be with an office. Simply because that's gonna leave two people down there by their cell, the fifty inmates, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, without any help, if they need anything, if they need it. Right now, we're walking distance right across the street, and we can get here quickly when we need to. They call for help on multiple occasions throughout the year, and if a deputy's gotta jump the truck and run two miles, that's gonna create a dangerous situation, I think, for the jailers, and I think we're gonna end up having to have more staff than we need. So if we're gonna put this on a bond, I'd say we do it right, let the people decide. It's, this is the people's money, this is the people's decision whether they want their taxes to go up or not, how much. But if we're gonna do it, we need to build it right, instead of just half-ass doing it and sticking a jail down there that's not going to be feasible. For what I need to do my job, or, and create a dangerous situation, I just think that that is a waste of, waste of our time, taxpayer's money, and everything else. It's gonna create a bigger problem than it is. So if we're gonna vote on a jail, if we're gonna give the people the opportunity to vote on the jail, it needs to be for the whole thing. Unless we're gonna build a jail right here close, towards walking distance from the courthouse, and walking distance from office. So if we're not gonna build a jail close, I'm asking for offices. If we're gonna build a jail close, then I'm fine with what we got. And that's really all we've got to say on it.
Ronnie, Jesse?
Yeah. I'm building today.
I'm gonna run, run out of here.
No, I'm okay. Um, I, I just want to talk about, you know, I don't even rate voting, you know, elect, decide whether the people vote for the jail or not. Whether it goes for the jail or not the jail, it's not really the point I'm trying to make here, it's just I think the people ought to have a voice in the courts. Right? Can't make a good decision voting if you don't have all the facts laid out. So I think that should be part of the, the voting, but I think that you can't take the voice of the people. You can, but people usually come back with their voice on, at, you know, at the ballot box and stuff, so just think about that when you're, you know, deciding whether you're gonna vote. Let the people decide or not decide. That's all.
Okay.
Is there gonna be this, during this, I guess, I don't think, two to eleven, or wherever, there's gonna be time to discuss. I mean, discuss before we vote on it, we're gonna discuss a little bit, or we're just gonna go straight in and, and vote?
No, we don't, we got going second session first.
I'm telling you, after, we'll come out at second session.
You're gonna decide when, uh, you wouldn't have, uh, I guess we can have a discussion on the, the.
Number four, approve the minutes for July the twenty-first, regular session, July the thirtieth, special session, and August fourth, special session.
I make a motion to approve that, Mr. Chair.
Second. August sixth. Number five, review and award bid for two oh two five dash oh six point two four, road material, contract, all-in, and delivery, two thousand twenty-six.
I got, I got open ready to go.
You're ready.
Open material group.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, for type A grade one limestone base is forty-three a ton. Haul, this, haul two, uh, precinct one is fifty-four dollars, fifty cents a ton. Haul the off, it's all the same on each precinct.
Fifty-four what?
Fifty-four dollars, fifty cents. And, uh, type A grade two, forty-three dollars a ton. So same price, and also same for hauling, one by three, uh, limestone rock is fifty-two seventy-five. And that is sixty-four dollars and twenty-five cents to each precinct, a ton. And, uh, three by five lime, limestone rock is fifty-five dollars and fifty cents a ton, getting it from the plant, sixty-seven dollars a ton to, uh, haul. You said it was, Tommy?
Okay.
Now that's hoping you.
This one here is from, uh, Statewide. Grofton, it's gonna be thirty-six fifty per ton. To Trinity, it's gonna be thirty-seven ninety-five, that's our yard. Per ton. Grofton delivery would be thirty-eight ninety, and Trinity would be forty, thirty-five. Uh-huh. That's from Brock, uh, Crestown. Three by five is twenty forty a ton. And one by three is, uh, twenty-one sixty.
I have a Congress here. The, uh, grade one type A is ten fifty a ton. Grade two is ten dollars a ton. One by three is what? Uh, ten. One by three is nineteen, and three by five is seventeen.
I got Frost, Truststone. Type A grade one is eleven dollars. Type A grade two is nine dollars. One by three is eighteen dollars. And, uh, it looks like they don't make three by five, but they got six by eight written in here for twenty-one dollars.
Twenty-one?
I have nouns here, uh, for the, uh, grade one to Grofton is twenty-two fifty, to all of them, twenty-two fifty. Uh, all the way down from grade two, one by three, and three by five is twenty-two fifty. Per ton haul.
So Connors is cheaper on the road base than one. Frost is a dollar, or fifty cents higher on one, and on grade two, they're a dollar cheaper. Looks like Frost is, that's the best deal.
Man, I think the previous years, we've always had Frost and Connors, one and two are, we pick, we know which way we need to go. So I make a motion to do that, and also they can motion to go down.
We want, we want Frost first, and then Connors is second. Okay?
I second that.
All in, please.
Ah.
Okay, number six, open review and award two oh two five oh six two six for engineering service to re-measure roads and bridges, precinct roads.
Uh, we had two, uh, that, uh, sent in proposals, but we didn't have a chance to put together a review team. So I didn't know if you wanted to open these two, or let me go ahead and get a, like, a three-person review team, so they can break them and come back the next.
Like the most we tabled, so, who gets that?
Okay.
Second. All in, please. Ah. Number seven. Water and sewer progress is proposed to jail, and I hate to believe.
One win, how are y'all?
How are you doing?
Doing good. Okay. So, I've got some information on our pumps, lift stations, the water resupply. So, we've got a grant with, uh, the Texas Water Development Board, a hundred percent grant, we're gonna have a well dug fifty foot from the existing well in eighteen months. So, that's the timeline they're giving us now. It shortened up a little bit, I think it was like, uh, twenty, twenty-two months, and now it's at eighteen. We're gonna be able to bypass some of the, uh, environmental surveys, stuff like that. Uh, but as of right now, I, we've been staying on our own, we lowered it down to, depending to every day, to five hundred thousand gallons, the, uh, we've been in May, no, June, we raised it back up to fifteen, uh, to one point two million gallons this month, to, you know, the, the July heat going into August. Uh, but the, thing to water supply, it's about a hundred gallons a minute at fifty-five PSI, uh.
Atholique, one, right?
Atholique, sir, yes, sir. I've not, I've not been down there to, to venture a table, trying to get the water out of the hole at the moment, we're building, retaining, uh, a big cover shed out there. Uh, but from what I have here, me and, uh, what's, what's the guy's name, that, that the, uh, thing to water supply, their, uh, water operator?
Tom?
Yes, yes, he, uh.
Who?
Uh, his name's Tom.
Well, he's the one that runs the, all the wars.
Yes, sir. So from what, uh, me and the research we've done, it requires two hundred gallons of bed per day, which is, uh, about twelve thousand gallons, about average, during your place for sixty beds, I know you don't ever have sixty in there, I think, what I heard is forty-eight, maybe fifty-five on the weekends. Uh, and he says, that he clarifies, uh, that he's certain that they can, or, uh, he said they're pretty sure that they can, you know, take on and do the water, and they supply us, it's one point five million. Y'all would use, uh, twelve, twelve thousand gallons a day, twelve times, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand gallons a month, that's just not that much. If the city of Grofton could supply that to you once our well gets there, so, because we can back feed up to this out, but it'll back heat into their mouth, into their minds. So, that's the, uh, we, they were there the backup, we'd be the main supply at that point, we can be back y'all's direction also, y'all have two sources there. Then, we'll move on to our sewer pumps and stuff. So, we were replacing two pumps, so, we had a surge, and it blew up, and, uh, a pump at each of the ninety-four and N L K lift stations. It's a four-inch, uh, two hundred thirty-gauge sewer pump, just got a generic thing, uh, I got the one we're getting here, it is up to, uh, there, uh, one thousand three hundred forty-five gallons a minute. So from what the math I've done on y'all's, the water you're gonna use and everything, uh, y'all should be flushing, on average, about, uh, two point eight gallons a minute, which is not much more than what the ci- it's not probably much at all for a six-inch line that runs down those places. Uh, the city of Grofton is split into two districts, most, uh, ha- pretty, pretty much fifty-fifty. Half goes to the ninety-four lift station, half goes to N L K. So, Grofton has twenty-two gallons a minute of sewage going to the, uh, lift station, so it's eleven gallons a minute, just about, per station. Uh, there should be a surge, if you say maybe it's fifteen gallons a minute, there's always gonna be that surge at eight o'clock at night, if you take showers, get off work. Uh, still, not gonna be a problem with our work pump that does thirteen or gallons a minute, and a six-inch line that runs to the sewer lines. Not a problem now, an extra, I think I figured here, uh, let's see, you know, the hundred and thirty gallons I said earlier, a hundred and thirty-six thousand gallons I said earlier, uh, that y'all are gonna use, it's not gonna be, you know, necessarily an issue. So, I don't see upon issue that being a problem there.
So you would have the backup, uh, in eighteen, where you got, that you can back it up, or can you back it up with the well then?
With the water.
Under water?
Yeah, so, uh, back to the line. So, now, we're doing, our well's doing pretty good, we added some stuff to it to make the back pressure, the head pressure a bit easier. Instead of going from the bottom to the bottom, third goes to the top now, uh, on the GST. Uh, so, we will have, uh, we, we, yes, we can supply a backup if needed. I think y'all said, uh, it would be thirty-six months, if y'all got the jail bill, so I understand, we should have the pump done, I mean, the well done way before it would be ready to go in. But I don't, I don't see, I talked to our water operator, he said, I don't see a problem with sewer. He says, if y'all want an engineer to look at it, we help y'all with it, that's what y'all wanna do. But I don't see a problem with it, they don't see a problem with it, it seems pretty, seems good to go.
Oh, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the ponds out there, I know in the past, y'all talked about dredging them, or something like that, is that something that's in the works?
Uh, we have talked about it, we're trying to get a, I think the last time we spent three hundred sixty-five thousand.
It was cost, I wanna say it was like a million dollars.
Didn't you do that a few years ago?
Uh, if it's.
Since I've been commissioner, I believe, I've not.
They talked about it before, it's small.
No, there's a crew out there.
Yeah, I think, uh, I wanna say it was Mr. Walton was, um.
Yeah, my first year in.
I think so. But I think it was done five years ago, maybe, something like that.
Good, it's about fifty years, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So you don't perceive any, any difficulty with holding that amount of sewer adding to it?
I don't believe so. I think we'll be good, we used, uh, we're, on average, city Grofton uses, uh, three point four million gallons of water. Flushed is right at two point seven five, I pull it back in my reports, I get it a month, definitely it's about right. Uh, and I don't see an extra hundred thousand gallons being flushed. Y'all, I, I know an inmate's not gonna use, what a household use, we just use what a, you know, a person washing their own clothes every day, doing that stuff, I don't know. Never been to jails, I have no idea what they do over there, how y'all work, but, uh, it's probably gonna be the same as a household, probably a little less, so the two hundred gallons a day might be a little steep, I'd rather it be more than not enough. So, I don't see an issue, uh, it, just whatever y'all wanna do, I don't see an issue with anything.
The land that you're, not the contract though, there, the sewer is already out in front of it, across the street.
So, so, so the Pennington water, I'm, I'm gonna do both at the same time. So the Pennington water interconnect goes from the corner of three one fifty-four into eighty-seven, and goes under the road, and then cuts back towards Grofton. So it's on the same side as the wells, and the GST is the water tower. The sewer is on the same side, is on the same side road as the, uh, interconnect line.
Well, what size lines are we talking about?
So the sewer line's a six-inch line, and along the manhole, it drops, I'm gonna say twelve foot down there, out at one tap.
Water, right?
Uh, sewer line, and it should be an eight-inch water line for a hundred gallons a minute. Uh, I'll look at that again, I'm pretty sure it's eight inches, it's a big old line down there. Uh, so, y'all benefit, you don't have to talk to the gas station, get it worked out with them. They are going to pour under the road twice, it's gonna be eight foot apart, one for the sewer line to get it to their house, their place, and one for the, uh, water line. So, if they're willing to and work with y'all, there's possibly gonna be tie-on, is there, put a manhole, the sewer on their side of the road, y'all can tie into that manhole, go on the road to another manhole, and also, you might be able to tie on to the interconnect line going that way also, that way we can still back feed to you.
Would the city own that manhole, and the pipe going under the road?
Yes, so everything, the, what the contract they have signed is, they, they can, they made the contract also. It says that they are, they would be annexed, voluntary annexed, and they are going to pay for all the materials, getting the, the road board, the manhole, everything belonging to the city, but they're gonna put it in.
Okay.
And their engineers are gonna draw everything up, make sure it's correct, we'll make sure it's legal with our people also. So. That's what we've decided with them, their annexation, so try to get pretty quick the hearings, I think it's voluntary, so they have one at type one versus two. Uh, we'll send a date for that, the next, Thursday meeting.
I just like.
I asked, I don't care where they built it. I can carry that, 'cause I've walked this up every time we talked about this jail, and I'm still concerned about your figures too, Mr. Mayor. And I'm still concerned about your figures too, Mr. Mayor.
What, when is, what is your concern?
I don't think the infrastructure will handle. I, I just don't believe that. And I'd like for, uh, an engineer, architect, somebody that's got more experience than me and you and the judge to tell me that it's gonna work.
Okay.
That's, that's my big concern. It's, it's been underway from, from day one. Eight or nine months ago, the well went down and for seven or nine days, y'all were out of water. Here in Groton, we had to ship the inmates, didn't we?
Yeah.
It's gonna be very embarrassing to build a jail, fill it up, and then have to ship the inmates, pay for the jail, and house them out of the county. That's the reason that I'm concerned about it.
The water's not gonna be an issue. I know it's not. The reason our well went down is this hole from the screens. Same guy in there and plugged up the pump, pump went down. Not because of the power surge. It had something to do with it, but it was not because, it could, it could've been both, but it was the screens in it. And so our plan at the moment is to have the new well dug. There's water down there. It eliminates, uh, about two hundred fifty thousand dollar test hole. Get that one dug and then go back eventually and rerun, rework the well we have now. It was still a nineteen forty six, it may be easiest to do away with that one and do another one. But as of right now, we may have a little bit left in our grant lines to go ahead and rework that well.
How many gallon per minute does that well pump?
Well, we have now about seventy-eight. We're hoping...
Seventy-eight gallons a minute?
Yes, sir. We're hoping to, uh, the new well, they can't tell us exactly how many gallons they'll produce, but they're hoping between a hundred and two hundred gallons a minute. They said if we're lucky, maybe three hundred. So it should be more than enough to run the city. The city, on average, right now, uses about fifty-five gallons a minute to run, just run the city. That's accommodate the surges in the evening, the morning, and water in the grass. This, that, uh, those numbers ran back in, uh, about April. So we have more than enough water to keep us going. We turned it down to half a million gallons up in front of, uh, Pennington. We're probably trying to back down that way here coming in October. So some of the jars have been off to, you know, keep and move the water so fast to keep the heat off the water also. But it's a good concern. You want an engineer to look at it. I will see what I can do to get engineer out there, check it out, look at it. I will supply all, whatever y'all need.
When you do all this work on children, the engineers involved?
Yeah, there is, absolutely. Before y'all...
It's gonna be done in the jail. If it passes, it's gonna take two or three years for power to all take. You're gonna have engineer to look at everything else anyway.
Absolutely.
I think they would be able to tell us how the infrastructure is.
They, the, the engineer guy from the gas station, they're having, I know it's not sixty beds. They're having, uh, every six, four to six showers and then, you know, two bathrooms, everything. He says six-inch line, that's good enough for a lot of water. He says we're, we're perfectly fine over here. It's not gonna make us a difference. So...
What do y'all plan on starting right around?
Uh, they just got, they dealt with Texas, got the entrance done there on two eighty-seven and, uh, three one fifty-four. They're gonna hopefully plan to start as soon as, um, they get annexed, which is a thirty-day process after Thursday. And then, um, it should be pretty quick afterwards. They will start hopefully the next, I hope it's probably a big opening there, but maybe six months.
We're talking about, we're talking about the well?
The, the...
No, I'm talking about the, the grant money y'all got when y'all started working on your well and building a new one?
Eighteen months.
Y'all didn't start in eighteen months.
Yeah, uh, they're go- they're going, I met, uh, four meetings so far about it. Been discussing what we're gonna do, because we had to do the, the well and then replacing the, some lead pipes in town within a certain amount of time. And so we're waiting to get everything done and we'll do all at once.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Y'all got any other questions?
No, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Number eight. You should discuss and consider the adoption and the order of Commissioner's Court of Transylvania County, Texas, calling a bond election to be held November the fourth, two thousand twenty-five, within the county. Making provision and of the conduct, the election and other provisions relating thereto. The proposed proposition generally relates to the construction of a new jail and related law enforcement offices. The final amounts and the scope of any proposition to be presented to the voters is within the discretion of the Commissioner's Court. Y'all wanna let that be open, y'all discuss that. That's what the pump is finishing.
Yes, sir. It was, I guess, pretty choice, choice words, but sheriff said, I'm saving taxpayer dollars, wasting taxpayer dollars. I wanna think that I've loved this since I've been commissioner. Making the right choices, spending the money in the right direction. I can't speak for nobody else but myself. So, uh, I've set the meetings. I had nightmares about this jail, so let's talk about it. I did, uh, some research the past, past three years of this jail and what we're spending on the jail. Twenty twenty-two, how, housing, just housing out, sheriff spent eight hundred thousand, not. Fuel, can't break up fuel because he's got a hundred thousand dollars between his two departments, sheriff's office and, and the jail. He spent a hundred forty-one thousand, totaling about nine hundred and forty-two needs. Twenty twenty-three, he spent five hundred eighty-four thousand. Fuel, a hundred and four thousand between the two departments. Twenty twenty-four, he spent six hundred fifty-nine thousand housing, a hundred fourteen thousand fuel. I'm sure there's some, uh, room for argument on the different, different issues. You, uh, can't really argue payroll because we don't have that many jailers here anyway, working. Maybe there's a little overtime, you could argue a little bit of money there. Wearing tear on vehicles, there could be a little argument there. The note on this jail, and I want everybody to know, because I, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to let the people decide, but I don't want them to be mad and forget about this day by years, four or five years down the road. The bond, sixteen point six five million, what the court decides to go with, eighteen point seven, two point one million more just for sheriff's office, offices. It's gonna end up being twenty-six million dollars after interest in twenty years. The note is one point three million roughly a year. Past three years that I did this research, we hadn't spent that much money just on that. We're not even talking about the operator. There's been all kinds of research done with surrounding counties that, uh, they average about sixty dollars a person. Inmates each day in, in a jail. If it's a hundred percent capacity, which we know we can't do a hundred percent. We gotta do eighty-five percent, which is forty-five people. At a hundred percent, that's one point three million right there to run. So if you're at a hundred percent, sixty people, two point six million dollars versus less than a million the past three years that I've been involved in these budgets. I didn't get twenty twenty-one, uh, so we can sure get that. I'm sure it's not going to be a million. At seventy-five percent pool, which is probably more right because the sheriff's office is running thirty-three, thirty-four people, is nine, nine hundred eighty-six thousand just for running. Like I said, if we're, if, if we're talking about wasting tax dollars and paying tax dollars and all this, I'm the whole, the whole ground with this whole situation out there. So me personally, I'm gonna let the people decide. But I want them to know, after, we can't run another bond for this operation of the jail. We run the sixteen or the eighteen million, whatever, uh, the court decides. We gotta figure out a run. That being said, we can only raise taxes each year because the state put a cap on us three and a half cents. So...
Three and a half percent, yeah.
Percent?
Yeah.
Excuse me, three and a half percent. So for the next three, four, five years possibly, we're going to raise taxes three and a half percent? And, you know, that's also, this money is also putting back in the seven hundred thousand that he's allowing to, to, to house out. So, you know, we gotta look at everything. I know that, I know there's a need for the jail. I know they struggle every day to find a bed. But we need to, we need the people to know what we're voting on. Yes, we do need a jail, no, we don't need a jail. And, and, and let's, let's all come together and vote November and decide. So that's all I have to say.
I think it's very informed of what you've done and, and all the facts need to be laid there. Yes, we know we need a jail and I'm voting to let the people decide what they want to do. But dollars don't lie. And it's going to be an increase if I understood Gary Diant correctly, that when he came and said that there would be five years increase, every year three and a half percent for at least five years, paying, funding, taking care of this. So with knowing all the facts out there and everything else, uh, it's a lot of money, but the people have the right to decide.
With the, with the six, I, I didn't add that, but with the sixteen, that four, which he's not gonna be able to do that without hiring more people and, that can't keep jails at a hundred percent staff, a hundred percent staff, sorry, but it... Can't pass.
Don't we now?
What's that?
Don't we now keep the jail a hundred percent staff?
And they may be able to answer that question better, but I believe it's eighty-five percent. You can only go to eighty-five percent. I mean, I'm sure you can fluctuate it or whatever, but, uh, at eighty-five percent, they consider that four.
So according to your figures, it would be, I told you, about thirty-eight percent?
Just seem to give it that. We come up with before when we have these little meetings that it's gonna be anywhere from, you know, thirty to thirty-three percent total increase, you know? You can't really have a number on the operation.
Till we see how it goes?
But... Because you're gonna fluctuate, you know, ten and a half?
Yeah.
Aren't one of them bickers pretty close?
Yeah, so, you know, looking at, you know, everything, the biggest piece obviously is coming from the cost of the jail. And then, you know, to what Tommy's point is, that's, that's where there's some ambiguity on how it's staff, how, uh, many inmates are being held there in the jail, you know? So with that being said, you know, we try to be fair in some, some of the rough numbers that we talked about, which is to make sure we add it back in the cost of housing elsewhere when we're, when we're looking at that, you know? And so, uh, you know, I, I feel like those are, are pretty fair numbers. So a lot of you, one of the things is based on our new, uh, proposed rate is, we're seeing a little bump. So that'll come down a little bit, probably closer to, uh, and these aren't official because the, the operation side of it, we can't just run, right? We, we can't pass a bond and operate it, right? That just comes out of our M and O budget for the county. And so with that, right, all in to factor the, the cost of the jail plus, um, you know, operating, but adding back in new, um, back in the inmate housing and with else elsewhere, we would, we would see, you know, it's probably closer, just a little over thirty percent total, uh, tax side. Now, that's not a cents, right? That's a percentage, obviously, and a cent side of that because we're at fifty-three nine, uh, one five three nine, which is actually very low.
I got little figures on the cents part. It's gonna be, for the bond, which he showed us that last week, the, the, the bond, you have to put in, uh, nine cents, almost, almost point zero nine six eight. And then, uh, for operation of it, at seventy-five percent, it's gonna be point oh eight seven. So we're looking at fifteen cents is what it's gonna be. We also have to look at the, what the contract deal will base, may end up being in the future. When I took office, we were paying twenty-five dollars a day. It's triple in twelve years. Jails are already charged in other counties a hundred and eight dollars a day for inmates. We're at seventy-five. There's no guarantee it's gonna stay at seventy-five. I think it's not. It's already talking about one to a hundred and twenty-five.
Isn't it sixty-five right now for San Jake?
Some of them are sixty-five, some are seventy-five.
You can put it on Facebook that it's sixty-five.
Some are sixty-five, some are seventy-five, and some are eighty-five.
Sixty-five right now?
Some of them are eighty-five.
Okay, you said seventy-five.
I just, average.
Sixty-five for the pain general.
But nonetheless, it's gonna increase. It's not gonna decrease. You also, you have to take that into account too. Also, eventually, there's gonna have to be a jail built whether we decide to build one this year or not. It's gonna have to happen. You can't just keep kicking the can down the road. When I took office, well, let me go back for the next twenty-five years. I have the plans in my office for a jail that we're gonna build here in this county. Twenty-five years ago, it was a hundred and sixteen-man facility. To build that jail twenty-five years ago was three million dollars. Three million dollars to build a hundred and sixteen-man vet. It goes up at least eight percent per year to build a jail. About five years ago, when I got serious about talking about the jail, actually it was ten years ago when I started talking about the jail. We got some figures together. To build a forty-eight-man jail, that jail was gonna be eight million dollars. Now we're looking at eighteen, sixteen to eighteen million dollars to build a smaller jail than they were gonna build twenty-five years ago for three million dollars. The cost, we're just either gonna kick the can down the road and the people later on have to suffer the burden, or we can do it now. We're talking about a tax increase on people of a hundred dollars for a hundred thousand dollar valuation. A three hundred thousand dollar house is gonna be a hundred dollars to build the jail.
Just for the benefit?
To build the jail.
Yeah.
So operation of the jail, that number still is not clear. Because I'm getting different numbers across the state. I'm going with forty dollars a bed to operate their own jail to the, I've even had some say at seven. Okay, so that varies. And also, how much you pay your jailers? Some people are paying their jailers fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars a year. We're not gonna be doing that. We're gonna be doing the bare minimum what the state requires, which is forty. So we're not gonna have that. We're, I don't believe, Jeremy in here?
Yes, I'm on.
Are we, are we gonna have to hire anybody else from what we got now to run a jail of forty-eight people? So our staff is the same. It's not gonna go up. So I don't know where the extra money is coming from that we're going to spend that we're already spending on other inmates. I mean, we spent, I saw somebody post yesterday on Facebook, twenty-six million dollars is what we're gonna have to pay back over the next twenty years. Well, that seems like a big number, but we're also at seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars a year. We're gonna be paying close twenty million dollars a year, uh, twenty million dollars in the same time to keep the inmates in other jails. So we're investing in other counties instead of running them. The other thing is, when I go to other counties and I see my inmates out there, we're paying them to keep, we're out working on the side of their roads. We can't have anybody from our inmates working because all they got over here is crap. I can't keep good inmates over here. Because the other jails saying, we're not gonna keep your trash. Don't send us your trash. We only want your good inmates. These are the inmates they use on the side of the road. Anytime the inmates start causing problems, if we can't keep females in other jails, that's another thing. I can't keep females, other jails won't take females either. So we have to keep a female over here in this jail that we legally cannot keep there. We legally cannot keep females in our jail right now. The jail has to. One day, that's gonna create a lawsuit in this county. We're gonna be way more than five million dollars. Other jails saying, we don't want your females. Some jails will take them. Not all, not most of the time, all jails are full of females. They won't take pregnant females. They're not gonna take, they don't take health problems. You got health issues, we don't want them. Other thing that we're gonna have to factor into this is also the, uh, the expense we spend on medicine. Right now, if the inmates in another jail, he hollers, he's got a Tuesday, first thing they do is they're gonna take him to the doctor. First thing they do is they're gonna take him to the emergency room. They don't care what the cost is, it doesn't cost them. They don't call and ask for permission before they...
You're gonna have to do the same thing then.
We're going to vet them a little better, we're not...
No, you're gonna have a nurse on staff, a doctor on...
You don't, no, you don't, you do not have a staff, you don't have a nurse on staff for this, this model of jail.
Judge, just, this is kind of off the topic of the jail and construction, but please stop housing inmates illegally if you can. The women illegally house in the jail.
How am I gonna let them out of jail?
You manage the jail.
I can let them out of jail? You're telling me I have to go let them go?
That's not what I said, I said, please do not illegally house inmates in a jail in the jail.
Well, you can tell these folks that, I don't control the jail.
You do, the sheriff controls the jail, you said it thousands of times.
You're getting completely off topic, we're talking about building a jail.
You said that.
You wanna address this?
I feel like you need to address it, please stop doing that.
Not in this way, I'm not in this, not in this environment, we don't need this guy. So, the only, so the only thing that you're doing, also, so the only thing that is factual, that we can say is factual, is the amount of the bond, how much it's gonna cost, percentage of that, how much cents that's gonna cost us. The previous years that I've looked up is facts, one hundred percent fact. We can't, uh, obviously, you can go to the grocery store and see stuff, it's not, everything's gonna keep going. There's no number, you know, if sheriff says that it could go up a hundred and twenty-five, where, there's no, there's no evidence to support any of that. I'm not saying he's wrong, not saying...
I think he's wrong, I think because several other counties have said they'd like to enter into a long-term agreement to house inmates at sixty-five dollars a day.
That is true.
Yes.
We, we judge it myself.
We also have a contract set in September, nothing years ago, and whenever the sheriff lost weight over, he kicked us out of the jail.
Judge, can I...
You're at the mercy of every sheriff that comes in office. Let, let me finish, if you don't mind. So, the, the facts, this previous, what we're spending previously, the previous years, the cost, it's gonna cost us. We don't really know, we know around about the operation, pretty close to operation, we don't know what the future's gonna entail. So, with that being said, I gave all the factual information, and rely, if any of y'all come look, it's all open records, look at the previous, uh, budgets. That's all we can say right now, and let the people decide, in my opinion, let the people decide on what they wanna do. As far as after today, from my understanding, and we're gonna get more explanation of it later, you can't politic forward or against it. You know, I, I don't think that... All we think we can do is facts, and that's what I gave today, and I don't wanna get off in all this, uh, weeds about all this other stuff, but this is the facts. I don't want the people to not know the facts going into this. Well, the facts are gonna be put out as they're supposed to during the town hall meetings. So, we can address that a little, and I agree, but some of the, some of the people that's coming and putting these on are gonna be the jail builders, the architect, the lawyers, that kind of stuff. Who's gonna be the person to put these facts out that I just gave? That's, I mean, obviously, the jail builders are that ones, they're, they don't get paid unless they, they pass the judge. They, they still get that information. I, I agree with that, that they can tell you how much it's gonna cost on the jail side of it, building it, but they don't know how much it's gonna cost to run it. Only the county knows how much we've spent and how much it's gonna be. So, it needs to all be out there, and, and I don't know, and maybe that's in questions... It's all gonna be out there. Maybe that's the questions for the, for the lawyer here in a little while, about who all can speak at these forums, but who all can, I know we can speak factual, but I mean, who, who, who can be the spokesperson for the county? Is it sheriff? Is it, I mean, is it me, or who is it to say, this is what we're gonna speak, this is how much it's gonna cost?
I hope it's not the sheriff, because, uh, in twenty years, we would spend roughly fourteen million dollars on housing, as opposed to the twenty-six million dollars for the minimum bed. I just did the math on about seven hundred thousand dollars on housing inmates, that'd be fourteen million dollars, not twenty million dollars, so...
Yes, if it don't go up.
Yes, if it doesn't go up, that much.
If it goes up, that means if we're creating a jail, that we're creating more also.
I'm sorry.
If we have a jail, we build this jail, and you're seeing everybody else's price goes up, that means if we have a jail, our price is gonna go up as well, it's gonna cost us the same to house our own inmates that we would have all, but the house may or may not...
But I'm not saying that like bonds are gonna go to jail, I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying there's not gonna be problems with jail, I'm not saying it's not gonna be expensive. What I'm saying is, this is not the time or the place to give the facts, we need to get the facts together, the correct facts, put it in a package, the people ask for it, they can see it before they decide to vote. It's ultimately the people's decision, it shouldn't be y'all, it shouldn't be on y'all, that's not a burden y'all should bear, and it's not a burden I should bear. But you should put the facts out there. I'm saying, to the people, uh, I went around yesterday and preaching before, I've talked to a lot of people, I put a post on Facebook, to see how much interest is in this, and there's a lot of interest. People, there's people that want the jail, there's people that thought they wanted the jail, but the price scared them, and there's people that don't want the jail. And I'm, I'm stuck in the middle, I don't wanna put my name on something this, this expensive, but I think that... But you're not, if you didn't pay the decision. The people are ready to vote, they're interested in this, and I think we need to get it out there on the bond, let them vote, let them... That's, that's all I'm asking, let the people decide.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what we intend with it.
Any other comment? As long as we, we have these town halls to set them up, everything is, you know...
Yeah, we're just a visit to them.
People, we're signed. That's the next thing, we're going in there, talk to the...
I need to make a motion to, to, uh, put this bond...
And if the sheriff stated he wanted offices, so...
Or not, not this one.
We're voting on an amount, so, if he wants offices, we can go back into justice jail and take a few beds out, put an office in there, but we're, I think we need to stick with the cheaper price tag.
But you're letting the people decide, your name's not on that, if you let the people decide.
We tried to say, we tried to see if it was, like, like I've seen in some school bonds, where proposition A, proposition B.
What you're saying, you can't do that. My, my, my deal is, if we're gonna build it way down there, it needs to be with offices, and there's multiple reasons why. There's, there's room in there. You can build it here, that's not a problem. Hey, you could attest this, but I said a meeting. I didn't know anything about offices being in there, I knew there was a spot for future growth of offices. When I went into the meeting with you and the judge, I was asked to go in there. Y'all were talking about offices, it's two point one million dollars more. We're talking about, the numbers I just gave are off of just the sixteen million, and it's already spending a lot more than what we're spending. Okay, you were cheaped up before, huh?
Yes.
Do you remember how many times we had it run across the road, whenever they hollered for help in the jail?
Yes.
Was it more than once?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens if they're two miles away, where I have to jump a truck and run down? That's all I'm asking, you know, maybe, we, no one consulted with me on whether this jail's gonna be built, or how it's gonna be built, no one. They just sent me a set of plans and said, here you go.
Mr. Sharo sent you the plans July seventh?
I have to speak.
Oh, so now we're gonna make terms?
No, I'm speaking.
Mr. Sharo sent you the plans on July seventh, instructions, you know, you didn't look?
Yes, he did, I had the emails, I had a board... I never got them.
He sent them to you.
Never came to meet Colton.
He sent them to you again, a week later, but I...
What I'm saying was, it's dangerous, I'm not asking to go offices, I'm just saying if you're gonna build a jail out there, we need to consider the offices, let the people decide. If we're gonna build it right here, somewhere close, it's an issue, but I, how many times has the dispatcher been overwhelmed, who's two girls in an office, running across the street, helping with the function, whatever they got business? A bunch, it happens all the time. So, you gotta also think about the function, though. You're, you're willing, it's a, it's a huge headache to you, and I know, this is... A jail is a headache. No, I'm not talking about the new, I'm talking about what you're in right now. Can I speak for a second? It's a huge headache to you right now, trying to find beds, correct, am I right? At particular moment, it's not... I mean, in the past, it's been, it's been a stroke. It has been. Okay, so you're willing to, over, two, two point one million dollars, there's a space in there to build, you're willing to just say yes or no on this eighteen million dollars on this bond versus a little cheaper to, that's still, that's still, we're paying way more? And you're, you're willing to lose all of it over this, or can we, can we put a plan together to try to build some off? You can't, you can't put a cost on lives, and something bad can go wrong if they're that far away. That's all I'm saying, is you cannot expect two people to sit down there with fifty inmates by their cell like sitting ducks, something can go wrong. Look, I, they just need backup, so, my question is this, we went out there, like I said, I don't have a problem with it, let's just build it here. All that's all I'm asking, if we're going to focus on jail without paper, without an office, let's build it close for the, let's build it close for the courthouse. There are options around here, we can discuss that later, but I'm asking y'all to go ahead and equip the eighteen-five on the bond, if...
Eighteen-seven.
What there is, if it passes, we don't have to spend that whole amount if we find a space closer.
That payout is twenty, twenty-five, eighty-nine, eighty-six, something like that.
So, twenty-nine million versus twenty-six and a half, yeah. But still, they're letting the people decide this, it's the people's decision.
We tried on that, we tried to do proposition A, proposition B, we didn't do it.
If they say no for proposition, for the eighteen million and the offices, I'm good with that, that's the people making the decision. We'll give you all inmates to other jails, it's gonna, you mention a big problem. I want y'all to think there's a problem in the future, I'm not trying to sell anybody on this jail, I'm just wanting you to know the facts. Well, the, the agreement that Commissioner Ford put in there last week, we're not bound to buy this property, so, if there is something, in my opinion, if there's something closer to here that we can get by, we're not spending this two point one million to make taxes go up even more, then, you know, we can consider that within the timeframe of...
Judge, may I ask, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's my understanding that today the commissioners are just voting on how much money to ask citizens to vote on to borrow. We are not agreeing to where the jail's gonna be, we're not agreeing to how much, or to what the jail's gonna look like structurally. Uh, if they agree for the, the sixteen-five, uh, more, in my opinion, fiscally responsible option, uh, the sheriff will have months to visit with the architects and creatively come up with a solution to his problem to save lives, as he says, which is a serious thing, and these are dangerous people that are locked up. Uh, but, you know, the taxpayers' money is a serious thing, too, and these gentlemen right here have been voted in to watch that money. Uh, the sheriff's been voted in to keep the peace, to rest the bad guys, and has them in a jail. I'm confident that if we have some fiscally conservative commissioners that give the sheriff the tools necessary to get where he needs to be, even if they don't give him all the bells and whistles and a big office, uh, he can be creative, you know? If we, we get the cheaper options, better for the taxpayers, and, uh, I'm sure he can work something out with the space, because we can change stuff around, it's not set in stone, it's just the money that we have. Judge, just wanna clarify that, thing got kinda lost, it got heated.
We could actually cut the jail down a little bit and add offices in there.
And that's a conversation you can have down the road.
I'm sorry, would you say that again, Judge? Very good. Would you say that again?
I said, we could cut, cut the beds down and make more offices in that, on there, bring it down to thirty-eight.
I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me what we do, again, I don't care which way we go. In, in the original plans, when I got involved, it has a space in there for offices, and, I mean, if, if there's a way, and let you deal with that, if, if this thing passes, maybe there's room for put a couple offices in there at a time until we build up to where we need to be, you know? Like Colton said, and I can't agree more, I got elected to be, y'all, the precinct one spokesman for the month, and, and the facts that I gave, it's, it's, it's already a big stretch. Why, I just don't get why would we put another two point one million dollar burden on the taxpayer. But you don't have to speak on that, if you let the people decide.
Yeah, and I think, I think I made this, we're, we're talking about a two point one million dollar difference between a general with offices and without offices, but I believe in how Will Rogers spoke, if you're looking at the bottom dollar, what it's gonna cost a taxpayer, there's like a twelve dollar difference from their per hundred pound valuation, you're gonna be at ninety-six dollars per hundred thousand versus, I think, was one point nine. So, we're throwing out this two point one million dollars, but I think the biggest concern is how does that directly impact each household? And I think the more advisable, and we're gonna give them, and what is the difference that you're gonna face from a jail with offices and one without, looking at twelve dollar difference? So, do you take it into consideration now, or do you take it into consideration that this expansion of jail had a later date in ten, fifteen years, and that twelve dollar difference to cover the two point one billion to upgrade, what does that cost, would it be down the road? So, is it gonna be a bigger twelve dollar difference, down to five, ten, fifteen years, and there when we decide to enhance the jail? So, the script, all the numbers we're gonna probably have, it turned out one, yes, as a whole, but the bottom dollar that I think y'all need to be concerned with, that we're worried about, what citizens are gonna be burdened with, given that realistic number they're looking at. I, I think I did, I don't respect you. No, I, I, yeah, I'm just, that's, that was another comment that was advised to us in that past initial court, when this second session had been had, with Capitol advisors, they kind of worked out what the difference was.
Uh, also, something else to consider, Sheriff, and anybody else. If, if, uh, if we can't determine office space in the other, I've seen a lot of facilities, especially out in the hill country, they'll build sheriff's office right beside.
I don't have a problem with that, that's...
Yeah, you can build something for three hundred and fifty thousand dollar versus two point one.
That's possibly true, we got no problem with that, all I'm asking is, is if we're going, that, if we're setting stuff, if that building is going down there, we really need to consider the offices now.
Hopefully, we can find something closer to you.
I would love that.
Yes, sir, thank you, yes, sir.
And I believe it has to be cheaper, so...
I think, uh, you can say we have to either make a motion or table this until after the executive session. So, I, I, I say that we table it till after the...
Okay.
I made that form of motion.
Exactly.
We, uh, take a fifteen minute break.
He said, who, who, who also made the executive session?
So, with permission, deny a term?
That's it?
Yes.
I'll speak to Judge, thank you, man.
Well, you got my opinion, so...
Judge, I, I made a motion, he's second, we do that vote on...
All invited?
Aye.
So, fifteen minutes, right?
So fifteen minutes break.
At this time we're going into executive session and the time is ten twenty. Go on your own.
I've got two choices here. One for sixteen million six hundred and fifty thousand. Eighteen million seven hundred and fifty thousand. On the dollar. If they want to leave off.
Well, I believe that the people should have a choice. That's the only thing. I agree with the sheriff on, but I agree that it should be the people's choice. And I'm still concerned about the infrastructure where it's being talked about being built right now. But y'all are saying that this can be changed if necessary. So this, this jail issue has been kicked since the early eighties that I know of. When Judge Thornton was the judge, and I was a young lad. I remember they were gonna build a jail on three Big Six with Pope County, and the Timber Company was gonna donate the land. I think it was like three point six million dollars.
I never did that.
I did.
Yeah.
Judge Thornton.
Yeah.
Judge Thornton said we put it in forty, but the tax rate was twenty-two cents. So it had been kicked down the road, and it's time for the people to have a choice. With all the facts need to be put out there.
So is everybody secured to make a motion? I'll make a motion to go with sixteen B. Put it on the ballot, no call.
Any majorities in?
I don't know.
It'll take a little while to all them vote for this. All them flavors? Aight.
Aight.
I'll just go ahead and let you everybody vote.
If you think you can go down about this, this deal, what we Do you think you need to go down about this deal, what we're talking about? Or you want to tell me the directions?
So there's a PowerPoint that's gonna go out to all elected officials. And it's the rules and regulations on what we can, can't do, say, how we do it. From this point on, you can't come out and say for or against factual information. The PowerPoint's gonna come out, it's gonna be emailed, and each elected official will look like this, where the elected official was, that's it here. And no, and also your employees, it's no county employee. So, when I leave from here, I'm gonna go sit down with my guys and talk to them, and tell them. So, all the elected officials need to be the same, it could be liable of, or, or
Ethics violation.
An ethics violation, that's what it could be. And it could also be a, as I say, this is what they're doing, so, but it says it all in this packet, and all the elected officials will just take a look at it, and sit down with their employees, and have a talk with them. But nobody can discuss the yea or nay, or you need to do it this way, or you need to do it that way.
Oh, company time.
Company time.
You at home, Joe Broke trying to find business with you, you could talk.
But it also says that on here.
But you cannot use county equipment, or county funds, to distribute anything, anything, out of your offices, far or against this bond, period. Cell phones, if the county branch give you a cell phone, you're not supposed to be talking about it, far or against it, on that cell phone.
That goes for every employee in Trent County.
Every employee.
And so, but it has to be factual stuff that you give, or a close estimate of what it would be. You just can't make up figures and make up your own stuff and tell it to people. Ethics violation, it's gotta be factual information. Did we say that right?
Yes, sir Judge, so the, the rule again is you cannot spend public funds on political advertising. Political advertising is advocating for or against propositions. You cannot spend public funds to advocate for or against an election. The county can provide factual information related to the proposition and kind of surrounding circumstances associated with it.
Me, me being elected, if I was Walmart Huntsville, and Jane Doe comes asking me, hey, what should I do here? Yes, you should vote for it, yes, you shouldn't, that's the political all, all time. But me being an elected official in this county, pretty much on call at all times, so, I'll be in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, can I say before we move on, this is kind of a historical deal. Tommy said he's been here for five years, me too, we've been talking about it, I didn't think it could get any far, it wasn't pretty, but jail's on the dock.
Well.
It's past, huh?
Two thousand thirteen, when then the sheriff took office, we started talking about a jail deal. And I told Woody, I said, I'll never be for a jail until we pay this county out of debt. At that time, we owed a billion seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this court out. But he reminded me in twenty-one, that we paid that note off. And he's been barking ever since.
I started barking before that happened.
I loved it then.
It's an issue, it needs to be dealt with, we're dealing with it.
We all know it is.
And for people, I'll have whatever people's side I'm good with, at that point, I don't care if they're, that they bless it, we're gonna win.
Maybe I can suffer tonight, and I don't have to go to the bathroom. I'm tired of this, I'm glad it's over. Must move on, Judge.
It's dinner time, Judge.
We don't have no bond?
No, I'm just kidding, I guess.
Number twelve, discussing act on approval and personnel action.
Don't move.
I see him having a question, I'll second that, maybe. But let me make a statement here about the last page. We, we lost a great employee in Lila Scud, and we're gonna miss him greatly. And continue to pray for his family, they really need it this time.
I wanna thank all of the county employees and elected officials that showed up to show support for him. If there is a good funeral, I believe he had one, it was, it was law. But Keith, he did a great job putting it together, and helping Susan, and I appreciate that.
Sure do, Keith. Thank you for taking care of two right there, I appreciate it.
I heard it was about Judge Smith.
Number thirteen, discussing act on approval of budget check list, pressure, two thousand twenty-five.
All right, you have the month of July in front of you, that's a big number. Well over a million, but that includes payroll, our taxes we pay, and vendor invoices, and so with vendor invoices, you're still at eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Uh, but some of that's passed through, which we have to pay back, and you state those twenty-two funds. His, uh, the county attorney was the first one we paid back, who's still waiting to hear on the others. Probably the DA will pay back some on his, and
Can you explain to that, I know it was a bear getting in the oven.
It was. Yeah, and then we're still going through hoops with their audits that they're doing, and what they want, and the different people, it's kinda like FEMA. You know, it's just like wanting more and more information. So we'll be paying those back, along with interest, stake wants every penny plus.
Just, just to explain it, they gave, Senate Bill twenty-two came out, and they gave prosecutors and law, uh, the sheriff's departments a great deal of money. My office is fairly small, and we had, we just kinda needed a little bit extra, and so, they gave us like a two hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand?
Three hundred, yeah, three hundred thousand, two or three thousand.
I, I couldn't use it, so we had to give it back. So, that's what it is, we're not paying any money, nothing out of pocket.
No, nothing out of pocket.
It's just money they gave us, and we didn't use it, so we give it anyway.
But they say, you have to invest it, okay, fine, but then they go, but you're gonna send that investment money back. And it's like, through the very day that they ask you to turn it back. Not as of September, but all the way through to the day that they send you the email. Which is, was paying, figuring interest rate through the day and period, then nothing, but anyway, we got that one done. Yes.
All these claims and invoices
Yes.
on here, have, have they ever been paid?
Yes. What you're saying, the check registered, that is everything that has gone out, it's either been pre-approved through the budget method, or, or it's gone through the court in some way.
The thing goes past a few months, that the counter, almost going backwards, or we approve it before it gets paid?
And we used to do that, we would do payroll the same way, we'd have it pre-approved before we issued payroll.
I thought, I thought this way they did it.
Yes, the only thing that we were not pre-approved with was utility bills, to make sure we paid the utility bills on time.
Why didn't we change it?
Why did you change it? It's more out of convenience, the court going, I don't wanna meet on this every two weeks, or every week, because of when they come due. Because these bills are due, and then by the time we meet again, now they're past due, and then we were getting penalties on them, or whatever.
But
We can change it.
If we did them, we could approve the favors
Yes.
the first meeting, and then the next meeting would approve the rest of them.
And then what we would do is not cut checks as often, we could only, we would only print them out, send them out twice a month.
It just seems like, I thought we've done it different before.
Yeah.
But I've seen some stuff being from getting hot for it, but
You weren't aware of, maybe?
Well, no, but, but I know we haven't approved yet that already.
No, because if they're in your budget, and you come through, and that's why we send their invoices to you and your assistant. Is this okay to pay? Because you ordered it, you placed it, your, your people have bought it. And then you tell us, yes, it's okay to pay, that's my okay to issue a check. But as a whole
Work towards
we would, we would need to print all of the invoices prior to them being the checks issued. The court would go through all of those first, but approve or not, or maybe some strike some. Then, not until then would we actually run the check run. I don't wanna do that with payroll, because it's, the way it used to fall, we would have to have an extra meeting every once in a while.
I think paper might be fun.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Smith?
My idea is like, why are we approving this now, if I can pay?
It's, well, what you're doing is you're looking at it, it's a pre, a pre, well, if you see something that's wrong, that doesn't mean that it's, we can't fix it.
No, sure.
We can. Uh, or if there's a question, well, that's not mine, that belongs to precinct four, yes, now we can fix those as well.
Oh Bonnie, I did notice that, I think some of my John Deere parts got charged to you.
We did switch that, we found out that, and we've done a general entry to fix that, it'll show up on the next, on your monthly report, and you'll be fixed.
I think it's in my seat place that you
It was yours.
So we are gonna change that back, on the bill?
If you want to, I mean, it will
I want to, I wanna look at it before the meeting.
Okay. Do we wanna do as a court approval in the agenda, uh, that way we've got, and, and start right then as well. Let's do that, the next agenda. So we'll hold those and start bringing them to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, we shouldn't, I mean, we meet twice a month, so, the ones that's ready on the first meeting, we can approve, and then the ones that comes in in the next week, we can approve the following.
By law, we have thirty days to pay invoices.
Sure.
And if we get it on time, so
We did it that way for years and years.
But that's, that's the problem with making sure we get those invoices in on time, because if they come in straggling late, that's when they're gonna be late, and then we have to argue over late pay.
I know it's just a small one, but I got a charge here to a transmission company that
From yours?
At Shell, they're not easy transmission.
Were you talking about the five fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Is that on yours, or is that on mine? No, mine, right.
It's on mine.
Sixteen oh two will be pricing two, sixteen oh three is precinct three.
Right here, see it's on two.
Commissioners, and I also ask a question. If y'all are wanting to do this, what happens with those checks that you need cut like today? We're saying that can't happen anymore, right? We're saying that would have to come before the next meeting, before we can cut a check to anybody.
No, no longer come in and go, I, I need to pay Joe right now, because he did this work on my truck, right now I gotta get a check today.
There, there's a reason why we have it this way right now, versus, I'm just
Yeah.
I feel that we need to do it this way, uh, prove it before we pay it. I, I believe that.
Okay.
So we're gonna change it?
Let's put it on the agenda for a vote.
Yeah.
As a whole, as a court.
Get a warrant, see brothers' files, and see what
And, and then that way we can bring you the first set of, that's why I'll make sure we don't put payroll, because that really costs us.
The good and the bad.
I mean, obviously
Yeah, I, I'd be better anyway.
Well, and we get, what about, now, we can have exceptions for jury trials, for example, that's another big one. Last minute call from the DA, we gotta have this money, we've gotta get that check, so they can pass the check.
That's no problem.
Okay, so
So that, that's the point, right, we gotta make some exceptions and end it at rule.
The only time I can call you and ask you for a check is when you'll be stopped out, and I have to go pay that man, because he won't put it in when it gets to him.
But this would change that.
Right, that, that's what we're saying is
I live with it.
Let's just make sure we
Make exceptions for say utility bills? Because those are to keep the lights and the air and everything on, and we don't want any more penalties, because we had past due bills and deposits when I first started here, that we had the deposits up, and I got all that money back. Because we were paying bills on time.
Could y'all do something like regular scheduled payments that aren't out of the ordinary, just maintenance and operation upkeep or something? Does it seem like it would work?
Well, that's what we're saying, if it's in the budget, you've already budgeted that you can spend so much for fuel, or you can spend so much for rock. So when we get those invoices, and you say, yeah, I ordered it, we pay them. So you gotta think about all of those regular, pre-budgeted, pre-approved by the budget. So if there's particular ones you're wanting us to pull out
No, I'm not trying to be contentious with you.
No, you're just saying here, Bonnie, trying
Because he's active as well.
Because we both have
Have to sign off on the checks.
And we don't approve those without pre-approvals.
Right. From the commissioners, or person, or the department. Isn't that on the agenda?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Is there any more questions, I'll make a motion.
A second.
But I do wanna address yours, if you still have that, you say there's a deal on there for transmission?
Uh, yes ma'am, it's a zero season. It's here.
And it was charged to yours, so I
Yes ma'am, it was, it's a DMC transmission.
Got it, okay, I can, we'll fix that.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Is that a motion right there?
I thought there was one deal though, from him, that you brought me, that both of y'all were paying.
Was that DNC transmission?
I think you have one that you brought me, Mr. Smith.
No, I, I didn't give you no bill for mine, but
I know, the one that y'all was splitting.
Yeah, I know who David DeSean is. Had something under that truck, transmission or something, on that truck I bought for our part-time guy, but
He worked on land?
Oh.
So it is yours?
Oh, yes it is. Thank you, man. Yeah, everyone of y'all over there.
Thanks, Brady.
It is right.
Well, she, we would, now, we always send that, so we get your
We explained it all the way.
What happened to the van? Apparently they had to work on the transmission.
Well, the van, the van was running hot, and, uh, the air conditioner went out on it. And, uh, my guys worked on it, and we couldn't figure it out, and the door, the windows wouldn't raise up and down. So I called David DeSean, and carried it out there, and he fixed it, and the next day it was, wasn't working again, and I carried it back to him, and he took the air filter off, it had bird nests and everything else in it, so, we got it straightened out, got the windows fixed, the transmission's working, and it's not running hot, and I and I did tell Brady to split it between all four of them.
Good job.
So it's been pretty.
At least it shows you're looking at the needles.
I had a motion over there.
I'll say. All right.
Okay. Number four, I think, discussing act approval of budget amendments.
Okay, should have four in your packet, I'm, which one you have on top? I'm looking at the one for the moving decals for Constable Precinct Three, moving some money from his vehicle fuel line to his vehicle parts and repair. Next one, county attorney, uh, we were just, we're just moving money from his bank account to the revenue side to pay for the office, uh, equipment that he can purchase under that.
Pre-trial version.
Pre-trial version, yes. Uh, third one, maintenance needs some work done on the maintenance truck. We have a line item that says telephone for the elevator. Nothing's been charged yet, we found out later we've been charging the phone line, keep the phone line, so we're gonna do away with that anyway. But this budget, there was some money, we took nine hundred fifteen million dollars to vehicle pair, for their request. And the last one is the formal budget amendment to use the insurance claim forms for sheriff's vehicle. Plus, the judge that, the county is gonna pay two thousand dollars on the bleed kits that were purchased.
The what?
Bleed kits, those ones that are tourniquets and bleed kits, we've got them scattered around the different departments, floors. Uh, county judge paid for a portion of those, through, said, county will do it, I'm saying then we'll take it out of contingency funds, two thousand dollars of that. That will, because we paid it out of the sheriff's capital asset, it stands on. So you've got the insurance claim, the two thousand for the bleed kits, that offsets the copa cost of the vehicle and the bleed kits.
There's one thing about it, you sure tail precinct three comfortable when he comes down the road now, so, y'all, y'all be sure and look at it, you'll think it's a useful police job. I make a motion to approve.
Second. All those favors. Number fifteen, receiving officer's report of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Number fifteen, receive the office clerk's board report of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, it was rather lengthy, but we are getting toward the end of our fiscal year, so I want to include everything in it that I possibly could. Uh, long story short, our cash reconciliation. Uh, treasurer has asked for help in his office, and I would, I've tried to explain why that is, he definitely needs some help in there with the workload, and so, a long way around it, with the cash reconciliation issues. Um, anything else that's, that you got a question on, just leave it out. Just for your information on it.
Number sixteen, discuss an act of approval of claims, invoices, and residential related records.
Uh, again, these are already paid, so these are the ones that we will talk about, holding and not paying until you approve them.
We're going, try to work on that thing, like a little bit, where I could really not think y'all hiding something from me, because you got a little, it makes me-
Well, we don't have any control over how it's trans, so we can make it landscape, make it bigger.
Well, I can barely see it, Bonnie, I'm serious.
I can see what I need to say, thank you, Bonnie.
Saying too much for a young man. I make a motion with, so, the second.
You can do it.
Seventeen, discuss in the set, county road bridge keys for calendar year two thousand twenty-two.
No changes.
No changes.
Shouldn't be, we're the highest we could possibly be, ain't we? Eleven fifty? Yeah.
So move.
Second. All in, buddy?
Aye.
Next, Mary, number eighteen, are you discussing act on the courthouse security committee?
Well, I was asking about the CTO about this. The last training that I went to, uh, they talked about a House bill, twenty-one seventy-six, that he passed. It is, the only changes that are gonna be made is that the courtroom security committee has to meet annually now. I don't think there was a set, anything on when they met, and so, when I saw, and also that a JP and a constable have to sit on the committee. And so when I saw that, I shot an email to the judge's office and just said, hey, just let me know, this is what's being shown to us while I'm here, don't know anything about it, didn't even know if we had a committee. And so the girl, well, the girls looked into it, and said that one was formed in like eighteen or nineteen with Judge Page, but nothing with COVID and everything, nothing really ever happened with it.
I think it was twenty-one, that's what it was, and it was my first year in, and we did something with it, I'm gonna go through it, finalize it, put it together, something like that. I don't remember, but I think it was-
And I just asked, because I didn't know, um, I'm still learning.
So, you said a JP and a water-
And a constable.
And a constable has to deal.
So right now, it is, um, any judge of a higher court, um, a, a DA, a county attorney, uh, commissioner, and then now a JP and a constable, and then at the end, it also says, or anyone else deemed necessary for the committee. So I don't know who was ever put on it, or one-
Also, since I thought I already had a, a member of the sheriff's offices.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Um, and so, uh, I just, the only thing I was doing was just letting them know, because I thought that they were over the courtroom security, uh, committee, that, the changes that passed in the legislation, uh, this term, and so, I had a guy that also spoke at the conference that we went to, um, Lawrence had been in contact with him from a previous conference and training that he had went to, but the waiting list, uh, was rather lengthy, he goes around to all of the court houses, talks, goes through, really just assesses their courtrooms, uh, courtroom security and all that kind of stuff, and so, we had reached out to him and was like, if we could just get on the list, I don't know how long it'll be, and so he finally reached out to us to see if we would be available, and so I, again, emailed the judge's office to see if he would be available for September tenth, he's gonna go to Rusk, then he's gonna come through here and then go to Montgomery County. And so he just is going to spend as much time as he can here, but he wants to assess this courtroom, the annex courtroom, and then any other courtrooms, you know, I guess JP courtrooms, if he has time, uh, and give us an assessment, uh, and that would then go to that committee, and then the committee make recommendations to the commissioner's court, so, um, I don't know.
Well, I tell you what, he'll neglect that, uh, judge wants to put, lock all the doors, put in, uh,
And this is just-
metal detectors and all that.
And all he's gonna do is make recommendations, there's nothing that's gonna be mandated, it's just a kind of a proactive to give you all an idea of things that we could work on, um, just in- So, that's all, just, I don't know much about it, I just saw it, so I was just looking to let y'all know that the mandates that were-
The one that was formed back in the twenty-one, was there members on there, or?
I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, go ahead.
It was formed in twenty-one, the only person here that was on there left was me. So, I just, the only thing that I saw was to pass on information to their office of what was passed or passed into legislations.
So he just-
So that we're not out of anything.
Regardless of committee, today, we have a meeting.
Oh, I didn't know we were doing all that, I was just bringing information to-
I would really like to bring it back up next, but I make a motion with table and bring it back, but-
And then, and then we've worked on, if you would see, uh, Vinnie, we was talking about some of this yesterday.
Hey, I'm not saying I am never gonna be on, I have time, I just was bringing what I found out or learned to do.
If you would visit with her in, in St. Gettysburg.
I need visit with her?
Yeah, if you would, but-
I know that I have time, I'm just bringing y'all so y'all are aware of what needs to happen.
Well, in this statement, I'm-
Yes, sir. And I, I don't know if they gave y'all the, um, I had escorted emails. But it's just some information that the, the gentleman coming had sent to me, and so, if y'all wanted, I can email it to you.
It says in here, designated from the sheriff's office, or representative from sheriff's office, designated from the county attorney's office, designated from the district attorney's office, so I guess they need to be aware for who, who don't want to-
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, but I just got asked to talk to y'all, so.
They, they can square anybody's, something.
I, I would say, he's aware of, he, he, he likes to point somebody in his office, he's aware of it, and he talked to Vinnie and say, hey, somebody has to be on this committee, and then we just do the next court, so, after, after Bush, or whatever.
I'll second that. I'll second.
Somebody can assess an act of interlocal agreement between the local county and the community, now, the end of public defender.
We've been approving this over years since I've been here, and it's on capital murder pieces, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Do they pay for the capital murder? Do you know anything about it?
So, uh, Lisa Rogers told me to find out the answer to those questions, uh, I think you're still gonna spend a considerable amount of money on the capital murder trial, I know we have one right now, I asked why this, uh, firm wasn't used, uh, and the answer I got was, this is primarily for capital murder when you're seeking the death penalty, it's gonna have like a mandatory appeal process and things like that, uh, but, uh, so it's kind of like an insurance policy, you pay so much that you're locked in at a certain rate, because I want to say capital murder with death penalty, being solid, it's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars it's gonna cost the county. Uh, another thing I did, or I asked Lisa, uh, is send this over to the district judges, uh, they may not even be aware that this is something we have to offer, and when they're appointing people to capital murder cases in district court, this can be a tool they use, and, uh, they may have utilized it several years ago when, uh, this all kind of took place with the current capital murders we're dealing with, uh, I can't speak to that, but.
So, this is, yeah, how much are we paying?
It's like thirty-three hundred dollars.
Thirty-two.
Two or three thousand dollars.
How much?
Two or three thousand a year, then-
Thirty-two.
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 Thirty-two thousand, thirty-one dollars.
Thirty-two.
Probably thirty, thirty-two, thirty-one. Well, I make a motion, we, uh, we go ahead and go into the contract, but I'd still like to see the judge or the district attorney, whoever it's supposed to use, if that you'd like.
I'll second it.
All in, buddy?
Aye.
Number twenty, discuss an act of agreement from Neil Smith, Commissioner, precinct three, and the land in pursuit of the handling of the drainage.
Doug, uh, I've had a big issue out there with the plumber, he was washing down, it was washing their land out, and, uh, he killed a beeper, and I need to get permission to, uh, straighten the ditch out, to keep it from washing.
So move. All in. I second.
Aye, lady.
Aye.
Twenty-one, discuss an act of renewal of our local agreement with DEPCOT for the next generation nine-one-one. This is doing it correct, we're just renewing it.
So, buddy.
Second.
All in, buddy?
Aye.
That's where the, oh, sorry. That's, that's interlocal agreements for the P S S, hopefully start this in twenty-four.
Yes.
The next one's for me.
Number twenty-two, discuss an act on renewal of our local agreement with DEPCOT for G I S, or GLS?
G I S.
G I S, next generation nine-one-one, and it's for the maintenance service for the debt payment.
What? What's up, man?
That's not next generation, that's name.
I thought that's what I made a motion for a while ago, something-
Well, it's all worked in, and I do on my computer and you like on your computer, it's at office.
And I want to brag on her, uh, Don Lynn, it's got a, a big job doing the whole county now, and she has some nightmares sometimes about some of this tough community, it's, it's fairly messed, but she's doing a great job, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely, uh, I'm back there, she sends me about fifty, twenty, like with-
I made a motion, you seconded it, or something like that?
All in, lady? Aye.
Aye.
All in, buddy?
Number twenty-three, workshop on, uh, A, the nine-one-one happening coordinate.
I don't have any changes on what I turned in, but the postage going up, I'm not gonna say I'm not changing, I have to get, then to run my report and see where I'm at. Okay, because it cost me a dollar and three cents to change an address, when I mail out that information, unless you can give me a mailing address.
The constable, precinct one needs nothing else, it's the same that we have and everything.
The what?
I said precinct one doesn't need anything else, the local stuff like it is.
Precinct three was good, precinct three also.
Aldrich, see, it'd be Aldrich.
Uh, I put a note in your, uh, packet, uh, I'm asking, not in my department, but for the IT department and for the brand administrator's department, um, they both need part-time help, you know, one of them's a part-time, she needs part-time, part-time help. Uh, so I put in here why, uh, we're asking to add two additional part-time people, one in the IT department is because, uh, we're gonna, we now be mandated to make sure everything that we have on our website is, um, it's not handicap, it's accessible, so those that are hearing impaired or visually impaired, uh, can go to our website, it is mandated, I've gotten, we have until twenty-twenty-seven now, Lisa Rogers sent me a note on that, it's been extended for our size of county. It's gonna require someone to sit there and take everything that we have on our entire website, all of our apartments, all of our information that we post, and make it, uh, created, like Sean explained, better than I can, uh, so that a person with hearing or, uh, visual disabilities with their equipment can easily locate this information, they can hear it, they can, the colors are then coded for them and so on and so forth, so that was one reason, because Sean is pulling somebody in different directions right now for, uh, every office in this county, and there are times, just minor things, like, well, my printer didn't work, scanner doesn't work, some of the minor things, which aren't minor, the department's having to, uh, we can send someone over quickly while he's working on major projects, and, uh, this person can also then help with taking all of this information, because it's gonna take a long time, it takes a year just to get through it, and then tag, uh, we page to, uh, post our website, they will probably be going up on their cost management, but if we can do it in-house, it will save us some money.
Bonnie, we created this position for Sean three years ago, two years ago?
Oh, it's been longer than that.
Okay, at that time, we were outsourcing all of it, it was costing, we were gonna save money by having a full-time employee.
Yeah.
We've got a full-time employee, why are we still outsourcing?
Not, uh, on a regular basis, no, only if there's something that comes up that's beyond his expertise, uh, and whilst while we do, we pay a very small amount for their assistance, uh, they're very good, so they are a backup in case we have a cyber security attack and we need some expert help, uh, they're very good at doing that. Um, Sean, uh, you know, when he's gone, it, and everybody starts, I see all the tickets that come in, everybody's clamoring, I need help, 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 and there's no one here, then we have to outsource to them, and they're good about promoting in, sometimes it just, it requires a person to just run over to that office real quick and fix the problem, and that's kind of all we need is a backup on that, you know, a part-time person would be maybe three days or less possible.
I had somebody talk to me about these computers, at one time, when I got here, uh, in thirteen, we were, the article was getting computers from P D C J.
They were all used and refurbished.
Okay, and we got away from that.
Yes, we did.
And we started buying all new computers.
The reason for that is because those were old refurbished computers, and they kept crashing and burning, and they wouldn't have enough memory, and they were just, they were junk.
Well, I was told now we're buying some used ones, and what I've come back stolen is-
No, that's an old story that you keep hanging on to, but no, I'm sorry, but we ordered it from, uh, Amazon, it was a Dell computer, Amazon notified us that the computer was fraudingly sold to them as, as a resale, as a refurbish, but we are ordering strictly straight from Dell, the manufacturer, we have a government contract with Dell, so that's where we're getting all of our computers right now.
Sure. I got a question, I'm looking at the budget part of IT.
Uh-huh.
What is, uh, this, the, uh, go down, it says, I guess that number, the big forty-two, twenty-five, that maintenance and service contract slash F I?
Yeah, that's our financial intelligence, that's our new software for all of your payroll and account assistance.
That's just, this is a whole new I S, it's thirty-four thousand.
Yes, last year- Yes, last year we paid it from the grant funds, the local government funds for the first year. You gave permission for us to use the first year of like twenty-five thousand of that. So this next budget year, we're gonna have to tag along to the I T networking budget.
I still don't get it.
Sure. I did have a list, uh, if you gentlemen received that, it's a breakdown by department on things that were added. You should have in your, it was just handed out this morning.
Oh, I didn't have it, I'll be able to.
Yes, so if you look at the departments, anything that was changed, uh, anything that was requested, you'll see by department number and name and order if you see it on your list. You'll also see what has changed in employee insurance costs, retirement rate. Everything's been updated. Workers' comp, financial employment, it's still an estimate, but it's probably still plus what it's been before.
In charge is fourteen?
Three-eight-five twelve. Per employee.
Say fourteen?
Fourteen thousand, three-eight-five twelve.
Three-eight-five twelve.
Yes. So that's, again, you need to, yes. That's a big cost of fringe benefit that costs a lot. So every full-time employee, we, the county pays that much per employee.
Fourteen thousand, thirteen thousand.
And you're gonna see it in your budgets because the system says if you've got four full-time employees, it goes bam, four times fourteen thousand. That's on your budget.
Yep.
So, on your outsourcing, on that, on the tag, is that not gonna help with all that?
They're gonna help, but not without charging us. They'll charge you.
I don't know, but I mean, are they doing that now?
Uh, well, not with this new mandate, uh, to, because there's only, their department with the I T department will tag. I think only about five employees. So we would have to wind up outsourcing it and the cost of outsources could be thousands of dollars. I went to a conference on this as well. And it's like, if you can start now and do it in-house, maybe a year, year and a half to do it. That's the route, but one person can't do it and then take care of the rest of their jobs. It is, it is, it's very in-depth, technical to do. They will assist us if we're not sure how to do something. And I did ask them for a quote, but they, they said they haven't provided from tag.
We just figured that, I mean, my mind and maybe they're already doing it somewhere else.
Every, uh, office that, uh, county auditors list serve, everybody's scrambling because some of the bigger companies, uh, bigger counties, they're required to do it now by the end of this, uh, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. We've now been extending, we were gonna do twenty-twenty-six, now they've just said, well, we're gonna be, because we were screaming going, there is no way we can meet this. It's so complicated. So that's the, uh, and if you have any more questions on the I T, because I did change, um, some items that will be going up. Uh, which are, one of the softwares goes away. F I, which is new accounting, is now gonna go under this budget. I did ask the fund to increase the network website cost because they're still going to need, they're going, tag still in charge is something. So, to maintain the, that, I mean, to service it that way.
The website?
Yeah. They host it.
Anything else?
We just added them. Ask for part-time for granddaughter and also the mileage.
Yes, on the mileage, we found that a lot of them, uh, presentations are now required in-person. She had to go to Fort Worth recently on a major grant. And there's more and more of them now that are, it's not just information exchanged over the internet by folders and documents. They want someone to show up from the county and present their grant proposals before we'll even get approved, even apply.
And don't we pay for her pilot so much of mileage?
Uh, we really don't have anything built in there. We have some education, but we never built in a mileage. We didn't think it was gonna...
She's worth it.
We were gonna require it, and we realized this last, we, oh, we're gonna pay it.
This is, this is not a license.
No, 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 no. This is so that when she has to go outside the Trinity County, that we're able to pick up that, you know, with a line item and not charge the education, because it's not. It is a, you know, responsibility of that job.
I'll tell you what she does.
It's whatever she turns in, it's mileage, it's not an allowance, no. And being that she is part-time and she, and believe me, she puts in a lot of time effort for all these grants. I mean, tremendous amount of time. There are some things that she needs an assistant for, you know, to take phone calls, call people back. When she's not here at her other job, she needs someone here to do that and just...
No, she knows how she works a lot.
Yeah, she does. And I do not have anyone in mind. I've not even considered anybody for this position. So just a need, both of those employees have mentioned to me, they've asked for it. So I'm just asking them for it to consider it.
Real nice service, but y'all have created, that's a good lesson.
The county clerk? That's my senior officer. Agent extension agent?
Uh, we are not asking for any increases, just assets.
Man?
We're not asking for any increases in the budget, just assets.
Axes accessory, what?
She's good.
District attorney?
You didn't have your changes dialed off.
Justice of the peace?
Well, it's very, what we do. So we've asked the last couple of years the full-time clerks. And, uh, I understand the insurance issue. I do. But you have to understand, we do seventy to eighty-five percent of the legal proceedings they place in the county at our level. And we deal with a lot. And we're part-time, but my office is full-time. And we are behind right now on getting paperwork done, stuff entered in the computer, just because we don't have enough time. She leaves at three o'clock. And I'll be, she's even asked to stay before five a few times, and I've allowed her to do that just so we're not behind that much the next day. We have that much stuff coming in. Our dead planes have gone up. Our, uh, small planes have gone up. Our traffic tickets have fought troopers. When I first took office, you might get five DPS tickets a month. There's three troopers working our county now. We're doing fifteen to twenty a week coming into my office. And every bit of that's got to be entered in a computer, plus the phone ring, plus people are walking in. You're entered in a computer, and somebody walks into the phone ring, you gotta stop what you're doing. Get out of that screen, go back over here. And then maybe two or three people walk in before you can go back to enter that one thing into the computer. We need full-time. And I guarantee you, we can't do full-time. I know the insurance is a, is a problem. But I believe the money we will pay to you in will offset it.
We're grounded. I mean, a lot of her, I would like to reiterate what he just said. I just spoke with my clerk. She just come back from both spots with fifteen new civil cases today. She will not get that in. Uh, I understand the insurance, uh, we spoke earlier. And even if you could do two this year, two next year, whatever you can do, we, we understand that. We, and none of us have a problem with that. But my, uh, my clerk just applied for a position, same position in Nantucket County, where they start out a temporary probation worker at a dollar more an hour than what we pay. How, if we cannot foresee any type of, of possible full-time position, on our sliding scale that where our clerks are right now, if I'm not asking to move them to another scale or anything, if we could slide over and just pay it's a dollar more an hour. Uh, it's the same thing if they're starting out with probationary, temporary people in the counties that join us. That would be great. And if, you know, you can start one or two full-time, and that way, you know, even, I've been four years down the road. I mean, I had, uh, three workforce girls working in my office, got my office covered. The state has now stopped that program. They've run out of one. My, we are now just actually starting to get behind. And this, both of us are in work, not just the one or two. Both of, well, both of us are trying. That's my, that's my figure.
The only thing I ask for is a little bit more training, the R N S that I went over. And my circumstances just changed, and so, um, my console's wife is no longer the clerk. And so she won't be traveling on his budget. And we won't be staying with her together, so, um...
Election administrator?
Steven.
And permission for all the things?
I have an increase just in contract calling because so far it will be the rock that I've had to increase since we're not able to go pick it up ourselves. So that's the increase that I have in that part-time business.
But that's coming out of your budget, right?
Yeah, I went over budget big time, well, then I'm solving it.
But I'm saying, you're just moving money around. It's not...
I'm gonna have to increase a little bit. I can, can pay that lease off.
I'll see it on the paper. I'm gonna take it out of your budget.
It's gonna add more to the budget.
We'll have to move it around.
It will have to come from the, uh, your income. And if there's not enough, then we have to take it from the general, maybe some operation.
What we'll do is move some money around.
Have to move the...
Or make it up.
I did, I add a line item for you gentlemen, you asked for your inmate meals from D C J, so I added those. Uh, Stephen already had a line item for that, but I'm gonna add it.
I didn't have a line item, that's, I noticed I had it, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have one either.
I, I was in charge, I need to miss ladies' expenses, but this way you can, you can mention it one of the meetings, you know, have a line item for meals that you purchase for those inmates. And maybe too much might not be enough, so I threw it number in here for you.
Good. We'll move it, we'll have to stretch it.
Yeah.
Motion. So, you want to take place? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I wasn't originally on the agenda because I'm supposed to be in trial right now, but thank you for squeezing me in. So on my list of things that I need, I have asked for five hundred dollars more on my school funding. We are to need more schools. We're, we have more probation cases that are being transferred to our court. So probation school is one that we're gonna have to go to. And also S E G S school. Trying to keep up with S E G S, to keep our percentage where it needs to be, where we get all these grants. And we learn something different every time. So that's one thing that I'm asking right there. The other thing I'm asking for is I have one full-time person. Now, district clerk's office has changed a lot in the two and a half years that I've been here. We are now doing one to three courts a week. We have two fifty-eighth, we have four eleventh, CPS and A G. We don't always attend CPS or A G, but we have to pull their files, get them ready, bring them over here so they can have court. Uh, we also are, we are collecting A T fees. That was not previous collect, that was not collected previous years. Just in the time that I have been in office, I've collected over twenty-four thousand dollars. That will pay for me another full-time person, or not another person.
That's why you're leaving, you're changing one.
Yes, moving my part-time to full-time. Um, also, we are now doing jury summons as far as in jury, okay. Before, all the jury summons that came in, we have about five hundred that come into my, we're putting in a box. Now, we take each jury summons and enter in why they came in, whether it's medical, it's their seventy-five and over, whatever exemption they have. We have to go into that system to enter in address changes. That's when we enter that in, and if the still goes in and enters, we have to delete some of the system. Indictment letters, we are now sending out. Um, I believe the court coordinator was sending them out before. We are now, as a backup, sending indictment letters out to the people that get indictment, indictments every month. Scanning, we're still doing scanning, about to be a hundred years from now, we're still doing scanning. Um, S E G S, keeping up with S E G S, it's up at ninety percent, we stay on top of that. And also, Patrick from Purdue has come in probably about four months ago and asked me. They had a little clerk that worked over in the tax office, and she would go through the files and the tax cases that needed to be closed, and she would work on that. I believe she got married and she moved off, so Patrick came to me and said, can you help me? And I said, sure, what do we need to do? Well, so they are sending us a list every month with about thirty cases that we have to manually pull, go in, see if we can close them out. And if we do, guess what? We're collecting money for that. So these are cases that have just been sitting on the shelves, just sitting there wasting space. We are now closing those out, getting money for them, for them. So I could really use one of my part-time roles to use full-time. That would be great. And I believe we're bringing in money to be able to cover that extra. And that's what I would like for that money to go to.
Thank you, Ben.